Somebody tell me how these things work.
Good afternoon, welcome everybody. This is the January 12th meeting of the Moscow Public Works and Finance Committee. I want to start off by once again saying thank you so much to our emergency services for the tragedy that we had on Saturday. Our fire, police, and emergency services, especially ambulance service, performed exemplary. The partnership between the city of Moscow, Latack County Idaho State Police, as well as the police agencies on the other side of the state line in Washington, Whitman County Sheriff, Pullman Police Department, Washington State Police, everybody worked really well to capture the suspect. We will probably not get over this for a long time, and some folks will never get over it. This is a thing that just rocks a small community, but we will pull together. I thank you, I thank our mayor for the comments that he's made over the last few days publicly. Thank you to everybody that's moved forward with this. I'm going to start off with introductions. Walter Steed on my right, I'm Wayne Kraus, Art Betke, and City Supervisor Gary Redner. And the first item of business today will be the selection of our chair and our vice chair for this committee.
I would like to move a slate of candidates' word with Wayne Kraus as chair and Walter Steed as vice chair.
You sure?
Absolutely.
Okay, then I'll go along.
He's keeping a low profile yet.
He's trying.
Okay. All right, well then we have our slate then.
Thank you.
Okay, next, approval of the December 8th, 2014 minutes.
I was sitting on that and would suggest their approval.
As would I.
And then they are approved. Next, we have Don Palmer, and this is the approval of the December 8th, 2014 minutes. No, dispersment report for December 2014.
Minutes are approved.
Never done this before, so.
You'll get better.
Aye.
All right, so this dispersment is the monthly report for December, as you had mentioned, 2014, and the last quarter, or first quarter of the new fiscal year. The dispersments for the month of December is $1,965,742.85. And they're comprised of an array of categories that we typically break out, and their categories are this: payroll is $835,989; sanitation is $252,386; professional services is $114,801. Now, of those professional services, a lot of that is the JUB work for Wayzoo Trueman Phase 5, some booster station work, things of that nature. Grants, $43,967, of which $30,000 of that is representative of the smart transit, so first quarter payment. The supplies, $72,330; construction, $317,499, of which of that, $272,000 is related to ball fields, okay? Vehicles, $15,111, which is representative of Ford Fusion for a police vehicle. Utilities, $80,260; equipment, $10,452; improvements, $49,174; insurance, $5,000, for a total of $1.8 million, which comprises 91% of the total expenses for the month. So, if you have any questions.
On the vehicles, you mentioned $15,111, and then you mentioned a Ford Fusion?
Yes.
What, do we get a wholesale rate, or is it used?
It's wholesale rate, but it's also included in a trade-in, so it's just, it's the book value, it's the net value of that expenditure. We got a forty, little over four grand in exchange, so.
Art?
It's good by me.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I'll pass this around. I didn't assign yet the chair, co-chair, so you might write your chair, co-chair beside it for me.
You misspelled my name, Don, but we'll talk about that later.
Oh, get all over that. It had occurred to me to tell Cassie that seat assignments had changed today, and so it's been a busy day, and made those last minute changes, so I apologize, she spelled her name wrong. I'm curious to see how she spelled it.
You miss sue that much?
Yes.
Yes.
It's been a very busy Don Palmer.
Okay, well, let's see, the next one is the first quarter 2015 financial report, then.
Yeah, so, this is the, well, you kind of said the narrative already, the first quarter payment for the fiscal year, we're required to do quarterly financial statements, so they print in the newspaper, and they're required to be done by the ensuing month of the end of the quarter, so by the end of January, they need to be published in the newspaper. So, as such, we prepared it for today's meeting, and I'll go through that. Total revenue and expenditures, now, realize that we do have seasonality to our government, in which case we receive our property taxes mostly in the end of January, first February month, and then again, a large one in July and August. So, when I go through the general fund revenues, that would be excluded from that. Also, in the water fund, we have seasonality there because most of our revenue, almost 51%, of it is based on consumption, and so the water fund's revenues will not be collected up to a point, however sewers fairly pay stream, so we see that revenue fairly evenly. So, in the general fund, revenue is at 14%, as I had stated, $1.9 million in revenue is collected, and we have spent to date, $2.8 million. Another reason why we have a financial policies is establish fund balance at a certain level so that we can get by ebbs and tides of these revenue shortfalls, okay? So, in a way, that represents 21%, which is a target of 25% in the first quarter, okay, is usually what we shoot for, but typically, we don't see that in this fund. In the street fund, it's 11.78% collected, and we have not received at this time, and as customarily so, the first quarter of the highway gas tax monies. And we did receive those in January, and there are about $6,000 more than last year at this timeframe, so a little up on gas tax revenue, although it's not reflected here in this report. The expenditures to date in the street fund are $448,576, which is 16% of the budget. And then parks and recreation is 20.3% revenue collected, and $353,000, or 16% expended. The Moscow School District is $32,823, which is comprised mostly of transfers into that fund. The expenses are $32,952. 1912 Center revenues are $29,000 collected and $25,245 expended, realizing too, that those are transfers for general fund support. The arts fund, $57,000 collected and $45,000 expended. The, and now you'd expect that to be at about 13% expended to date. Transit Center revenues, $4,700 collected, $3,600 expended. Water fund revenues, sure.
Don, back up just a second to Transit Center revenues, the space that CTAI rents.
Yes.
How much is that, what's the percentage of that rental versus the rest of it?
I'd have to get back with you on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I can get you those numbers.
I'm currently reviewing those contracts now, so I can let you know.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Water fund revenue is $1,054,000, 21% collected, and expenditures are $1,099,000 expended. Sewer revenues, $2.3 million, which is 32% collected versus an expenditure of $1.9 million. Reason for that higher revenue collection to date is the University of Idaho pays quarterly. It used to pay annually and be higher than that, but we, they've, the revenue is 100% in this number, and then they pay over the next four quarters, which is something different than in the past, okay? We didn't do that until this year. Sanitation fund, $1.1 million revenue, is 24% revenue, and $858,000 expended. Fleet fund, $383,000 in revenue, $159,000 expended, and that, 22%, that is relative to monthly journal entry to reflect the last five years averages of expenditures, so that is a uniform amount that all of the departments pay based on their fleet size. Information Systems, $305,000 versus $298,000, fairly tight. And then we get into the miscellaneous funds, water construction, sewer construction, sanitation, construction revenue, those are all transfers from the operating funds into the expenditures, I mean into the, excuse me, into the construction funds for future projects. The capital projects fund is $56,000 collected, that's grant-related revenue. LID construction, $4,763, Hamilton Parks and Rec, $18,000, which would be interest income. And bond and interest debt service, $13,005, which is property tax money to support this swimming pool. And then LID debt service fund, $14. Expenditures, water construction, sewer construction, $35,000 in water and $18,000 in sewer. HUD, $3,729, that's a transfer back into the street fund on a monthly basis. It's going to clean that $14,910 completely out, and we will not have that fund in the 2016 fiscal year. The capital projects fund, $168,726, mostly street-related projects and some parks. The Hamilton Parks and Rec is the $288,541 relative to the ball fields. And finally, the LID debt service is $3,750 is related to fiscal agent fees, fiscal agent fees, that we pay the banks. Any questions? The total of those pretty much match at 8.6 versus 8.6 million, 14.5% revenue collected versus 14.36% expended for year-to-date. This larger print version, I just went through the council version, which is the more detailed version, the larger print version summarizes that, and that's what will be in the newspaper. Any questions?
Don, you mentioned on the 1912 Center that the revenues are transfers?
Yes.
Why would they not be equal to the same as the operations expended here, since we have a budget in line to expend a certain amount per month toward the 1912 Center?
I believe that has to do with the utilities and the janitorial type service, I think there's like two or three line items that are.
Utilities is a fixed amount, our last contract, if I remember correctly.
I'd have to go back and look and see, because there's some variance in that regard, and that'd be the only variance. The contractual amounts are exactly right, they're amounts set.
I think the last contract, Gary, we set utilities at a fixed amount, if I remember.
Yeah, they, we negotiate the amount, and then that is what we pay regardless of what the amount of utilities.
Yeah, so it has to be one of those other line items that are not part of the contract that we're responsible for.
Take a look and let me know.
I can do that.
It's not much money, it's just a curiosity question.
It's just one of those things, but I'll find out for you.
Then if I may, Wayne, one other question. You talked about why seasonality impacts this report, but one seasonality that I don't think occurs, that I thought would reflect in the report, is with 25% of the budget year expended, October, November, December.
Yeah.
None of the salaries reach 25%. They're all anywhere from 15% up to 20.26%. I would expect them to all be much closer to 25%.
We have 26 pay periods in the year.
Okay, there you go.
And so, part of it could be that. We've also had a number of turnovers, and so that's part of that as well.
Seasonal.
And seasonal summer employees would push them all toward the full budget amount.
Particularly in the streets and the parks department.
Okay.
Is a huge part of that, those two seasonal numbers.
Well, it may be, it may be the 26 payroll thing, I guess, that for some reason, they're all, every single department's lagging.
Yeah, it'd be primarily the reason.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Art?
I'm good with it.
All right.
With explanations.
With an acceptance of the report, after council, I will submit this for print.
Thank you.
Sounds good, let's do it.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Don.
Next item is, we will be having a public meeting, and this has to do with the 1039 Alturis Drive Lot Division, and Becky Cowes will be presenting that. Hi Becky, how you doing?
Good. All right. So, for your review today, we have a lot division request located at 1039 Alturis Drive. The subject property is located here on Alturis Drive outlined in red. To the west is South Blaine Street, and Alturis Drive connects up here to State Highway 8 to the northeast. Subject property is located within the multifamily residential R4 zoning district, as well as adjacent properties, with surrounding properties to the north being in the residential office district, and to the south in the R2 and R3 medium and moderate density residential zones. The minimum lot width, well, I'm sorry, the purpose of this lot division request is for twin home to be located on the parcel. The minimum lot width for twin home lots is 25 feet, the minimum lot area is 2,250 square feet. The proposed lot division is to divide the existing lot, which is 5,171 square feet, into two parcels of almost equal size, one at 2,582 square feet, and one at 2,589 square feet. As previously mentioned, the minimum lot width is 25, and the minimum lot area is 2,250, so as you can see, the proposal meets both of those requirements for the R4 zone. Per the city of Moscow requirements for lot divisions, the property owners within 600 feet have been notified, and the site was posted seven days prior to today's meeting. The staff's recommendation is to take public comment if applicable, and recommend approval of the lot division request with no conditions suggested.
Okay, well, this is not a formal public hearing, but we will certainly entertain anybody that has any comments, if they'd like to come forward and state their name and their address. Let us know what's on your mind, plus or minus on this, so.
Could you point out the adjacent lot, because last time we were here, December sometime, we had another one? Which lot was the other most recent?
The most recent one, I believe, is this one.
Yeah, that's the one we split last time.
Yep.
Did we skip over one?
The two adjacent lots are owned by different owners, and they're currently vacant, so this is the same owner as the one you just heard.
Okay, well, nobody's come forward for any comments. Palmer?
I'm good.
Art? Oh, Gary, did you have a comment?
Actually, no comment.
You're naming your address, please.
Just in light of the new makeup of the commission, or committee, this process is set up as an alternative for lot divisions, so public comment, the reason that we advertise it is so that you will open it up for public comment, to take whatever's there, so it's run somewhat like a public hearing, and then make a recommendation based upon that, which then will be taken to the city council, so I just wanted to reiterate that.
Okay, thank you. So, Gary, you're good, Art?
I'm good with this, I'd move, we accept this with no conditions.
This looks to me like it's the same thing that Mr. Leplman's been doing all along here, so this committee is good for it, and move it forward to the consent agenda.
So, you're recommending approval of lot division with no conditions?
With no conditions.
Thank you, we'll put that on the consent agenda.
Okay, we still have Becky. Next one is a public meeting again, and this is on the 626 Kenneth Street Lot Division.
Okay, so once again, the review before you today is a lot division request at 626 Kenneth Street. The subject property is located here on the north side of Kenneth Street, between South Logan Street and Lynn Avenue. The parcel is located within the medium density residential R3 zone, as well as all surrounding adjacent properties. Properties to the east nearby are located within the moderate density residential R2 zone, and to the west, within the multifamily R4 zone. Within the R3 zone, the minimum lot width for single-family and two-family dwellings is 60 feet for those lots which are not provided rear access from an alley, and that is the case with this lot. The minimum lot area for R3 parcels is 6,000 square feet for single-family and 7,000 square feet for two-family dwellings. Setbacks within the R3 is 15 feet or 20 feet for garages that face the front street, for the front yard setback, and for the side yards, five feet, with the two sides totaling to a minimum of 15 feet, and the rear is a 20-foot setback. The existing parcel is 21,300 square feet, and the owner is proposing to establish two parcels, one at 10,500 square feet with a minimum lot width of 50 feet, one at 12,600 square feet with a minimum lot width of 60 feet. The minimum lot area, as I mentioned, for parcels within R3 is 6,000 for single-family or 7,000 for two-families, so the newly created parcels would meet that requirement. The minimum lot width, as I mentioned, is 60 feet for lots which do not have alley access. However, as you may recall, the owner received an approval for a variance on February 18th, 2014, to allow for a reduction in the minimum lot width. And since the approval of the variance last February, the owner has continued to try to sell the parcel and has not had any luck, so therefore, she's taking action now to request the lot division, with one resulting parcel being at a reduced lot width, the 50 feet, as is allowed by the previously approved variance. There is an existing single-family dwelling on the parcel, it's circled here in yellow, and it will meet all required minimum setbacks for the lot. And again, per city of Moscow requirements for lot divisions, the property owners within 600 feet were notified, and the site was posted seven days prior to the meeting. Staff's recommendation is to take public comment if applicable, and recommend approval of the lot division request with no conditions suggested.
Well, once again, this is a public meeting, and so we will entertain any comments from folks out there that would like to speak for it or against it, and I'll just ask you to come forward and state your name and your address. And seeing nobody coming forward, we'll have a little discussion here. Walter?
I have no problems with it. Well, given that we upheld the variance request, this seems to be the legal punctuation on the end of the process, and I have no problems either.
Well, I think it looks like the logical way to go, considering the property hasn't sold. It's, by right should be able to do this, it meets the frontage requirements, and so this committee will recommend approval with no additional conditions, and we can go ahead and put that, I think, on the consent agenda also.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Okay, the next item is city entryway beautification project, it's a final report and some recommendations. Bill Belknap will be presenting that.
Good afternoon.
Well, I think I've been reminded at least three times that there's a football game on, apparently, this evening.
What game would that be?
I don't know. So, I'm going to run through this fairly quickly, we'll be before the full.
Don's leaving.
Go ahead, get a head start. Well, Don's got a little bit of commute, so I'll run through this actually fairly quickly tonight, and then we'll have more time to go through the full, during the full council consideration on Tuesday of next week. So, just a little bit of background, as the committee is aware, the appearances of the city's entryways have been an area of concern for many years. Council established a goal in 2013 to develop improvement plans for the beautification of public right-of-way at city entrances by 2014. We discussed during the formation of the scope of the project, they were going to look both at the entryways, as well as the continuation of roadway corridors into the downtown area, and ultimately, the project's intent was to examine opportunities to improve the appearance of the community, and other actions we could take to positively impact the community's appearance and character. As we discussed, the project was outlined in two different phases. Phase one was an evaluation of the corridors and identification for improvements that could occur that would improve the appearances of the community. We looked at multiple elements within those areas, both looking at hardscape, softscape improvements, visitor wayfinding and resources, public art installations, as well as other corridor enhancements. And phase two of the project reviewed concept designs for identified locations and cost estimate development. That is, so we were going to develop preliminary designs and cost estimates. As a reminder, there is no funding that has been identified for construction and improvements to date. The goal was to develop the plans for the council's consideration and for consideration of funding and future construction. So, as we looked at the project in fiscals 13 and 14, the council budgeted $35,000 for professional services. Staff developed a project scope and approach that was presented in March of 2013. At that point in time, the council authorized up to $10,000 of funding for phase one, and up to $25,000 for phase two. We went through the RFQ process, and August of 13, we selected a design professional to assist us, landscape architect design, and we formed a steering committee to help guide and direct the project, and held eight meetings over the course of the project, as well as two open house meetings, one that was held in September 18th, we have 13, and one that was held in May 29th of 14. Steering committee was a great help in the project, membership included Walter Steed, Melanie Zimmer, Michelle Fusen, Ken Helm, Josh Larson, and Gina Trucio from the chamber, Iris Mays from the Arts Commission, Jim Miller, Ray Pankoff, and Nels Reese. The steering committee's roles were to provide guidance and oversight, represent the community and project stakeholders, and serve as ambassadors on the project, and ultimately provide recommendations to the council, which is coming forward at this point. We did a number of exercises with the steering committee, and asked them to look at the community with new eyes, look at these corridors, record their impressions, identify areas that they liked, or areas that they felt could be improved, and where key focal projects could be focused. So, we, a number, all the steering committee members, we were given map sheets of all the corridors, reaching from the entryways to the kind of downtown core, this is actually the south lane, out kind of east-west here, so this is the south in the community, the grain bins, and this is at the south couplet. So, we had these maps of each of the four corridors, west, north, east, and south, and asked them to drive the corridors and identify things that they felt were assets, things that they felt could, were opportunities, and other things of note through the corridors. And we took all the input of the steering committee, and we entered it into a Google map to really begin to gel together all of the input they received from the steering committee, and then moved that into a open house meeting, this was the one that was held in September, where we shared the intent of the project, and we had maps where participants could place dots on areas that they felt were the highest priority locations, or to identify locations they liked, and also to share some different treatments, some beautification treatments that could be implemented in the project. From that, we developed a initial potential project list and a general description, looked at relative cost and magnitude, and helped hone in on the eight sites that were ultimately identified by the steering committee, that really included two on each of the corridors, one near the, what you would feel like is kind of the city entryway out near the city limits, and one at each of the transition points between those corridors and the downtown area. From that, we made the report on phase one, and council authorized us to move forward into phase two of the project, which was the development of the concept designs for those eight identified locations. I'm going to flip through those kind of quickly, this is one on the west side at Warbonnet and State Highway 8. Again, on the west corridor then, here at Llewellyn 3rd and the Pullman Road intersection. The next site moving north was the north entry, this is Pin Tail down to Rodeo, there at the north entry into town. And then moving a little bit farther south in the north, this is the north couplet at the C and Main intersections, and the north couplet in general vicinity. This on the east was the Mountain View and Highway 8 intersection on the east corridor, and then the Steiner White and Highway 8 east intersection here, also on that east corridor. And then coming from the south, the identified areas beginning at the bridge crossing. And then coming from the south, the identified areas beginning at the bridge crossing of the South Fork of the Pluse River and working our way up to the Pluse River Drive intersection. And then the last was here at the south couplet intersection with US 95 and Highway Eight. So there were a number of recommendations I won't read through in the interest of time this afternoon, but there were a number of objectives that were identified and recommended by the committee. Number three dealt with the specific targeted landscape improvements for those eight sites. Public art was a consideration through all of the process. And number five was to support the university's efforts and its gateway improvements, as long as its other improvements along the south side of the Pullman roadway between Perimeter Drive and Line Street. And number six was to partner with the Idaho Transportation Department with the Thorn Creek Project in visualizing and focusing on improvements that could occur within the, that improvement project when that is constructed. As we looked at the eight individual sites, the steering committee recommended this as the following ranking for prioritization of the projects, with the north entry enhancement being number one, the north couplet being number two, both because it was a good candidate location, but also tied with the council's additional goal of expanding the perception of the Main Street downtown area north on Main up to C Street. And then focusing then on the south entry at the bridge to the Pluse River Drive, and then the south couplet is number four, then moving out to the west corridor at Hadley Way, then to the east corridor at Mountain View. Steiner and White then was the seventh on the east corridor. And then Llewellyn and Third was ranked as the lowest priority because of the conversation that has been occurring recently about a possible intersection rearrangement, so there is concern about making any type of investment improvements there until we really understand what the future of that intersection was going to look like. The steering committee recognized, and as part of the process, there are detailed cost estimates that have been prepared for each of the improvements, and they are not inexpensive. The least expensive was about $80,000, and I think the most expensive was near $400,000 for installation. And so the committee did recognize that a lot of these improvements had a fairly large budget and likely exceeded the financial resources the city might have available. The steering committee did make a recommendation that we consider a self-performance model where we would hire our own crews to do landscape installations. There were a lot of activities and a lot of things that were identified by the steering committee related to weed and vegetation growth that was there, because they're, you know, looking at trying to enhance, expand, and increase the amount of vegetation management that we did on the roadway. A lot of times, it's just the roadway edge, both on public and private property, that we have a fair amount of grass and weed growth during the summer season. So a lot of those activities could be performed with our own crews and staff. We could expand upon our capacity with adding seasonal, part-time staff individuals could handle that. Much of the other work focused on tree installation, as well as some landscape installation, and those are also items that we could self-perform, and we could do bulk plant purchase and do installations over the, over the summer season. And so the steering committee felt that was a way that we could begin making efforts at a lower cost than the, you know, obviously hundreds of thousands of dollars of doing the design bid and build model for the other installations. The steering committee did feel, though, that the north entryway was a priority. It was also the lowest cost of the, all of the project sites that were identified. And so the committee did recommend that the city prioritize that or escalate the installation of that and actually do that as a design bid-build project where that can be done quickly, and it needs a little bit more careful attention due to the grades and slopes in that area. But also then to move in a self-performance model on the other remaining, essentially six sites, if you're going to defer the Llewellyn and Third Street intersection. There is a breakout of a potential budget, or what it would cost for that self-performance model, between labor and materials, and it begins at, I think, $57,000 annually. And within three years' time, it is estimated that all of the plant materials and street trees could be installed with the crews, I think, focusing on essentially two sites per summer, as well as the other maintenance activities, weed management and other corridor maintenance activities. And so then at year four, you would just be in a, in a maintenance mode at that point in time, where, you know, these, these will, installations and trees and landscape will require continuous care, and whether that's, this is budgeted at retaining the two seasonal six-month staff members to do that maintenance, the weed management, the replacing plants that you have mortality or trees, you know, that die during the course of the time period. But overall, just providing a higher level of care to the corridors and to landscape installations throughout the corridor. So the installation of the north entry project, the original estimate was $80,000 for that project.
How much?
$80,000 for the base project. Steering Committee did explore some options where it could possibly be reduced in scope a little bit, to bring it down to something closer to $50,000 for that initial installation, and then the remaining individual projects would be done on a self-performance basis. As I mentioned, so we'll just give a recap on the project expenses to date. As I mentioned before, the council authorized a total of $35,000, or budgeted a total of $35,000 for this project, up to $10,000 for Phase One and up to $25,000 for Phase Two. The actual expenses that we've incurred to date included a little over $2,000 for Phase One and $12,000 for Phase Two, so we've expended about $14,000 over the course of the last year on the project. So with that, it's a quick recap, and if there's, I can, I will give a more detailed and slower-paced presentation on Tuesday, but I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have at this point in time.
Well, Walter, thank you for chairing that committee. And having been the chair, I'd look to you for some comments.
Thank you. Excellent job, Bill.
What can you fill in? Anything?
Well, I'm going to emphasize a few things. There was a mention about the south couplet and working with ITD, and as part of that steering committee work, it was pointed out that we have three entryway signs in Moscow north, east, and west, but they never built the south one because they didn't know where the road from Thorn Creek was going to come to town. So I've already attempted to implant in ITD's mind that if they ever bid and build a project coming in from Thorn Creek, that they include a similar sign to what we have on the other three entrances in their budget and let the ITD project pay for it. But that's just a minor thing. Bill pointed out that we saved $21,000 in the design work that was done in terms of the council-authorized funds for the work to this point. Those funds that I understand, if I remember correctly, have been captured in capital projects when the last fiscal year expired. But, so I would like to see the council pick those funds back up in the next budget process, minimally, to put in the construction side of this. And then the, the action that's called for on our agenda today is receive the report and provide direction. I would like to send this to council with a action item that staff be directed to pursue the funding method that, that Bill has already brought out to get this thing built over a five-to-seven-year period. On page 34 in the report, it has a sentence that says, "The steering committee recommends the city prioritize the north entry enhancements and pursue this improvement immediately through a design bid-build model." I would like to suggest to this group that the council action at the next council meeting be to do exactly that. And then furthermore, Bill put the table up there for a five-year funding plan, that staff be directed to make every consideration, to make that part of the budget process. That'll be starting sooner than staff would like to see it start, probably, but soon. So I would just like to keep, you know, the emphasis on this and to move it forward.
Gary, do you see any issue with the, with the, some of the desires that Walter has put forward?
I don't think there's a thing wrong with the council giving the direction that they like where it's going, bring a proposal forward in the budget process. I don't know what else, Walter, I maybe missed something. Was there some other action you were requesting be done?
No, that would be sufficient, but for the council to make direct comment to staff that the council would like to see this done, if that were the vote.
Well, I think that, to me, that would be the direction it's going to go, and I'll actually look for you at the council meeting Tuesday to go ahead and make those comments.
As Bill indicated, the landscape architect consultant's cost estimate to do the proposed work.
Do you remember the total? It was a number that was so far over my head, I don't remember it, but it was-
I want to say it was about 1.8 million and for all, to all eight sites.
I didn't add it up, but I had in my mind 2 million, so.
Yep.
Yeah, it was a choke number. I mean, you're just like, whoa. And, and I'll give Bill credit. Bill has come up with, with the program that's on page 35 of the report that talks about a way to get this done. I was very pleased with our using red shirt prison labor to cut the weeds on the entrances to the city at the beginning of last summer. It made a lot of difference in what the town looked like driving into it, just with the weeds. But when, as Bill said, when the steering committee was asked to go out and drive into town with fresh eyes, every single comment started with weeds, weeds, weeds. And so I believe that, that that needs to continue, whether it's with red shirts or through the program that, that Bill is proposing with additional seasonal labor. I don't know if, if, if the city wishes to put that seasonal labor on as early as those weeds might be cut at a time when the rain has stopped, and once cut, they stay down and don't come back. So that would be a timing issue for staff to work out. But I was very pleased with that. We were probably a half a day short in having enough labor to get all four entrances looking really good. Southeast and west looked really good. North had a little bit of a look of ran out of time, but it showed that it could, could work and, and would make a big difference in what the community looks like. Gina Terusio sat on the steering committee representing the Chamber. A big push, and she's certainly welcome to comment if she wishes, you know, by the Chamber and by their tourist group, subgroup, is to enhance the entrances of Moscow for the purposes of assisting the U of I with their efforts to increase the enrollment, so that these parents out of south and southeast Idaho who have only heard of Moscow and probably not very good things about that, if they drive a kid up here to come to Vandal Friday, they're not depressed, rather they're impressed by what Moscow looks like as they come into the campus.
Gina, you have any comments you'd like to make? Come on up.
University's spending money to help their entrances, and this will be part of it.
Gina, thank you for your participation on that. Before you start, Art has a comment he'd like to make.
I was just going to say that I think the whole project is a very good thing to be doing. You only get one chance to make a good impression, and our city entrances are it. And given that some of this is going to have to wait until we get through the next budget cycle and get it introduced to the budget, I was going to reinforce what Walter said is that it doesn't take a whole lot to chase after those weeds that are at the entrances. The weeds, the grass growing through cracks in sidewalks and along the curbs and things like that. And if we can just get ahead of that issue, it would be sort of like a small Band-Aid on a gaping wound, if you will, but it would help. And I think we really need to proceed with that. And then also, as Walter suggested, get this worked into the budget in a style that we can accommodate without hindering the rest of the city's operation, and definitely get this going, because it's, it's something important, I think, that the city needs to have. We look okay once we get to the middle of town, but on each of the entrances, not so great.
Gina.
I, thank you. Good evening, all of you. I would very much and very enthusiastically echo Walter's thoughts about that very first impression. Any way you're coming into town, it would be great to have a very good first impression given. I think, too, to build on what you say, Mr. Becky, that basically, a little bit of improvement can spread throughout our entire community. So maybe some of those grass growing up in the sidewalk cracks and that sort of thing could actually start to disappear as well, you know? So I'm energetic and enthusiastic, and I, as long as I don't have to work with the red-shirted prison team, I would love to help plant some plants. So if you need one more really good helper, I'd love to do that.
Wayne, if I might. Personally, Gina, I would look to the Chamber for leadership in terms of the private properties that have issues.
Yes, sir.
It, it, there are some. We've identified them. We know where they are. I'm not suggesting that the city take on private property maintenance, weed cutting or whatever, but I do believe that if we get the parts done that belong to us or belong to the state rights of way or whatever those things are, that, you know, a freshly painted house in a neighborhood encourages other people to think about buying a little paint. So that kind of thing, and with, with the Chamber's support and encouragement to private property owners, just kind of bring the whole thing up a little bit.
Right. Yeah.
In this 2 million that we're going to need, it'd be great if the good fairy would drop 2 million dollars in our lap, so we could just jump on this and get it done, that being obviously not going to be the case. Is there any grant money out there that's, that's available for something like this? Something we could look into?
The only money that I'm aware of are CBG-type grants, downtown-type grants. Doesn't mean there might be some opportunities with ITD or some, I'm unaware of any city beautification grants at this time, but we could certainly bring that up to Alisa and have her take a look. She keeps her eyes on things like that. If I could just make a comment, I like the excitement about where it's going. I would, I always caution the council, when you're looking at a $60,000 budget item mid-year, we're just barely into the new budget, it's easy to get excited and say, this is what we want to have done. So I would recommend that the council, if the council's action is to move ahead, which makes sense, to develop it. There are labor things that need to be dealt with here. Parks and Rec's the one going to be doing the labor on the issue. It takes a little more planning, but I think the direction to bring a proposal together to council that does what is contemplated in the plan, I think, is a, is a great way to start, and then the council can weigh it against the priorities that it has at that time.
And thank you for that. I think that you bring some good points to it. I also, I know that this committee is going to move this forward to the council with certainly a recommendation to proceed with Walter's additional comments to it. And that being said, I think you're going to find that the council as a whole is going to be very enthusiastic about this and want to move forward expeditiously as we can. So the action plan would be, let's see what staff can put together and what we can get done this spring and this summer, this year.
We'll have to look at the resources that are in the budget at this time.
You know what? We, we, Walter and I were visiting today, and I made the comment that, you know, over the years, I've noticed we do a lot of talk and not quite as much walk, and we all know that I prefer to do a lot of walking. So. Thank you for your comments. Anything else, Art?
Nope.
Great. Gina, thank you. Bill, good presentation. And we'll move this on to the regular council agenda, so we can have some additional comments.
Thank you, Gina.
Thanks, Bill.
Next, we have a report, and then we'll be done, and that's on the cable audit results. I know that Walter had had some questions on that previously. We actually had a, some conversation with another entity about looking at that. Don, what'd you come up with?
A vendor wanting to help us out.
Vendor wanting to help us out for X amount of dollars.
Yeah. We started the project a couple of years ago, and originally Pullman had contracted the company out of Florida to look at an audit, and then it, what happened was Time Warner had volunteered without, I'd actually taken it to council and got permission to go out and move forward, and then the following meeting, they got wind of that and said, you know what? We can provide the audit and use the same guidelines. So we, we allowed that to happen. Took a lot longer than we ever anticipated, and finished that up this last December, wasn't it, or January? And so what we got out of that, and then I, what I had asked for was to review their, their work, and so I had done that, and the amount of monies that we had received was similar to what Pullman had gotten, and we, the amount of money was $35,346.
Don, what, just a smidgen of detail. What did, what did they find and where'd they find it? This was a vendor that went through billing records or payment, what'd they go through, and then what types of things did they find that got us a check?
Typically, what happens is as a city grows or its annexations occur, the, the boundaries grow, but then they're, they're behind and- grow, but then they're, they're behind in, in capturing. They send the monies off to the county or, or don't even submit them if the county doesn't have a franchise fee. So a lot of times they'll look at the property records and see, oh, these properties are actually in the city limits, and you should have got the money, not someone else, or if the county doesn't have a, I don't believe they do, a franchise agreement with Time Warner, then the money should have belonged to the city of Moscow. That's what this instance was, and with that comes advertising dollars that is remitted back because it's a percentage of revenue total. So that, that's the kind of information that, that they went through and found.
So Time Warner was billing customers, which because of our agreement with Time Warner, Time Warner owed us some percentage or dollar amount of each of those customers' remittances to them. And this audit found there were customers out there paying Time Warner, but Time Warner was not passing through our part.
Within our city boundaries that had been, these changes of boundaries didn't, didn't take effect on their records.
It also has to do with level of service. As people change their cable services, as Don indicated, it's typically a percentage of revenues generated within the city limits. So where the city limit falls is a big piece of that. There are also levels of service under the Cable Act. So all of those things together, every now and then it just makes sense to check. You'll see the, Avista will do that every now and then. Any franchise utilities typically have some sort of ability to come in and audit them to make sure that it's being done correctly.
And, and in this case, we hired a vendor who searched the records, and they kept a percentage as their fee, and the $35,000 is net to us?
No, actually not. We, the vendors typically charge 50%. And we were about to go down that path when Avista said that we will...
Time Warner.
Or, excuse me, Time Warner had said that they will do their self-audit. We agreed to that as long as we had access to those records. Took a long time to go through the accessing part of those records, but we finally got those, and I verified the, the amounts with them. Otherwise, we would have had to have a 70, over a $70,000 rate adjustment to receive 50% of what we did get. So I'm pretty pleased with the fact that we did get the revenues that we got. So, and it's in line with what, what Pullman got, so.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say that the county did not have the same type of agreement?
No, I don't know that they do. I don't know. They might, if they do, then what would have happened, they would have deducted their amounts, remissions to them to make it more equitable to us. So I don't know.
I would note that the Time Warner Cable is no longer under the city franchise. A couple of years ago, the state passed a legislation that the, at the behest of the franchisee, could elect to go under an omnibus state franchise. Time Warner elected to do that. So the franchise they have here, if they have other franchises around the state, then they can use that same franchise. Just makes it more standardized for them. The good thing is the franchise fee remains the same. We lost some local control, but it's up to the discretion of the franchisee, so, and this was all pre-state franchise audit.
So this was pretty much a one-off addition to the budget, and in the future, this will just provide the snapshot that they use for a while until they go back and look again. And then it goes into the state pot and we get divvied out.
Correct. And this was part of a series of audits that we had done just two years prior to that, so about four years ago, we had hired a consulting company to go back and look at our electrical charges and went through that process as well. And what's funny about that is we said, well, we think we did a pretty good job already. And they said, well, we guarantee you that we will find money. So they did, and it was like 150 bucks. They spent a lot more money than that. They got 50% of that.
So how often do we do this audit?
This is pretty unusual. We've not done one of these in the past, and I had heard a few agencies around, the only second one in Idaho, I think, I'm trying to remember who did the other audit, whether it was Twin Falls or Idaho Falls, but one, one of those other cities had done one as well, and about the same timeframe that I was pursuing one. So I came across it at one of the national conferences I was at a few years ago, and it was coincidental because Bill Maholand over at Pullman, that he just got, after being approached at GFOA, they researched myself and Bill at the same time wanted to do both cities at the same time. And they didn't get that, they just got Bill's.
How, how far back do they look? How many years do they go back?
They went back five years.
Yeah, just to the point when Time Warner Cable took over from the last cable franchisee from the previous one. So they're only responsible for what they, since they came on.
If they, if they had been a provider for 20 years, they would have gone back, looked at 20 years of the records.
That's your limitation, probably?
Ah, typically you negotiate that.
Yeah, okay.
But I would suspect five years is about normal.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Hurry.
I think we lost Walter. He got a...
Phone call.
I wonder who's winning, Oregon or...
Seeing as there is no more business to come before this committee, we stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.